All to order, the Planning Commission is staff ready, recording. We good to go? Alright, excellent. We'll do an official roll call. Vice Chair Kai.
Present.
Commissioner Wadola.
Present.
Commissioner Giles.
Here.
Commissioner Harsh.
Here.
Commissioner Vance.
I'm here.
And Chair Simpson. Alright, first agenda item is Joy Chang, Senior Planner, Residential Housing Code Update. Is she?
I am filling in for for Joy this evening. So you get me for both both topics tonight.
Alright, double duty. Alright.
Yes. So the first topic in your packet tonight is House Bill 2001. I think all of you are familiar with this House Bill that is requiring middle housing types to be allowed in residential zones in Sherwood and in other cities throughout the state. First, I just want to start off, do any of you have any questions about this House Bill? Okay, moving on. So we have a couple of things in your packet this evening in regards to the development code work that we are doing. The first item of information is the Code Audit Matrix. And that matrix, you've had a couple of days to look it over, and it is basically, it is organized into seven parts. The first section or row column is organized by, you know, the section or the chapter of the identified code language that needs to be changed or modified or included. Then we have a recommended little column for recommended what those changes could could be or maybe. And then we have a a cell that highlights our discussion on that topic item to address, you know, like any needed questions that we need answered before we move into amending that code section. And then we have four additional columns that we talked about, including in this matrix at your last work session in December. And those columns are, you know, is this amendment required by House Bill 2001? Does the amendment support the housing policies identified in our draft comprehensive plan? Is the amendment supported by the Planning Commission? And ultimately, does the amendment support clarity or consistency within the overall development plan itself? So we've made those changes. I think Jean, were you about to say something?
Well, I think the the title's supported by the Planning Commission is I don't know if it's supported by us or sponsored by us or recommended by because as I guess was just looking for clarity.
You know what? I think we could maybe say supported slash recommended by.
Yeah. Okay, cuz that would infer that we don't support the rest of the things that are on here if there's not a comment on that.
Right.
Recommended slash supported by Planning Commission. Yeah, that would be good because then, yeah.
Okay, I'm just making that note. And then at your last work session on this topic, you provided direction to staff on seven policy questions, which we included into that memo and wrapped up your conversations into the matrix itself. So you can see that.
So on the seven recaps, the memo on item number five, it asks about parking standards. Should we allow garage space to count towards the off-street parking requirement? And I'd kind of like to revisit or get a consensus from the Planning Commission if what was heard is what we intended to be, that we in some cases would allow garages to count towards the required parking spaces.
I I had question about that one as well, Jean. My recollection of of the last, you know, time we were on this was 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 strongly against it.
And I believe I believe there would be a difficult. I don't I don't know that council would be supportive of counting garage spaces because I don't know how many people actually, you know, in your own neighborhood, how many people are using garages for parking consistently that would warrant a change in our code.
Well, and I I remember that part of the conversation about council mentioning that, you know, that's that's a contentious issue throughout our city. So based on that, and then, you know, I think our own personal experiences would would probably think that that's probably not not an ideal change, so.
Okay, Commissioner Giles?
Yeah, the only the only allowance I'd be able to make is if, for instance, you know, if it was that you had double the depth or, you know, you know, one and a half times the depth or or a little bit expect, like if if it was not, you know, I could see that counting as like a half a parking spot. I couldn't ever see it. I'm I'm aligned with you. I think parking on the street, you know, we already have too many cars there. It's already too tight. However, I could imagine if you were to say, well, you know, we're building these extra garages that do have storage built in and this and that, and so that takes up, you know, half of a of a car requirement. And so if we have two houses, that is worth one street parking, but then we start getting into this weird spot of what, you know, how how do you decide exactly what it is? Because I'm with you. I think most of the people on my street, you know, at the most, they could get one car in their garage. There's a couple that could get two, but you know, that's the exception, I think. So I I I wouldn't want to use that as a standard.
Okay, Commissioner Vance?
Well, I get most cars in my garage, but I still like having a driveway. I, yeah, I had a big no written down, and that was my recollection of last meeting as well. But I do have two questions on on this one. And I think this is on the packet page thirteen. There is a, under the required by House Bill 2001, there's a question mark. Is that just because we don't know what this group decided, or because we don't know if that's required by the House Bill? What's the question mark mean?
Question, the que- thank you. And I was gonna bring that up after we get through this little summary here. But those question marks in the document are primarily for staff to go back and to get clarity either from DLCV staff about some of these issues that that we're not clear on from, you know, either the administrative language that's out right now or the draft code as well.
So for an example, so for new commissioners, and I and I'm probably gonna use the wrong numbers, but generally, in our residential, we have a requirement that says you have to have one parking, one off-street parking space per house. And if we all of a sudden, and and garages don't count towards it. Now, if we say garages count towards our off-street parking, then we may be now putting everybody either on the street or limiting limiting the ability to have any parking. We have to go into, there would be a probably big consequences if we change the code that significantly as we are increasing density. So.
And Jean, off-street, like the driveways count towards off-street parking, but the garages do not, right?
Correct.
And and if it were to change, it's not like driveways with the garages because you'd still have setbacks that need to be adhered to.
Unless unless the setbacks changes. What if what if we change to alley-loaded houses with no driveway in the front and the only access is an alley alley garage load in the back?
Yeah.
And there there could be, and that's some of the code requests is that we do reduce our setbacks, which would then potentially reduce the driveway length to maybe not meet the ability to comfortably park of, you know, full-size trucks.
Unless, you know, unless we unless our type of construction changes drastically towards, you know, going going towards alleys and garages in in the rear with no driveways and 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 things like that. Because I'm not in favor of reducing setbacks necessarily either. So I was just wondering if that would, you know, if that change would affect the driveway, the driveway parking or the counting of that, so.
I think maybe on single-family detached, it's not going to be as prevalent, but when we go into cottage clusters or duplexes or triplexes, starting to count garages in those non-traditionally Sherwood environments are potentially going to create where where we start parking or counting garages and run out of parking, so.
Yeah. Something that that Taylor, sorry, sorry, did you have more to say or?
No, I just I don't I know Steph has to do some more research, so I don't want to belabor the parking. I just want to make sure that the maybe item number five get re. I have, I haven't heard anybody from the commission jump up and say they want to count garages.
The last thing I was gonna say was something that Taylor had mentioned that made me think of, like, if if there were, I don't know if if we'd be able to come up with this type of system, but if there were some way to incentivize developers to have more garage spaces, say, if there's, you know, anything over one or two garage spaces potentially counts toward an off-street spot in some type of ratio, then that might be something I I might be interested in. But I don't I don't know if that is something we could be able to put together or if it would just be too complex and 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 more problematic.
It could be one of in the residential checklist that we're going towards. It could be one of the design options.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be complex, but it also could be, they did, you know, I did hear in the developer scenario that they do want to have more flexibility and options. So if we provided a flexibility option with parking, as you're suggesting, that would be, you know, that'd be some a tool in their toolbox then.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that could be something that would be beneficial, you know, potentially to to most parties at least, so.
Excellent. Commissioner Vance, do you have another comment on the parking?
Well, I had another question. On the next, on the next one down on packet page fourteen, where it's using examples like no more than two spaces per duplex. This is a requirement of House Bill 2001. Is that is that requirement like we can't require more than two, or it's no more than two are allowed under our code? If a developer wanted to do more than two spaces?
I think it's the developer can't do more than two spaces. It's two spaces only per duplex.
So our code will limit it to one space per unit?
Yep.
Okay. Alright.
So so just to clarify, if House Bill 2001 says we can only require two off-street parking spaces per duplex. And so if they don't have, if they can't count garages, they'll have it in their driveway.
Does the difference between require and allow? So that's why I was curious here. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Require or allow.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. That was my question.
Excellent. Alright. Any other comments on the draft memo and the feedback to the staff about the summary report that they provided? Other than my name spelt wrong in the last paragraph?
Oh, no.
I know my term's almost up, so I thought maybe you're getting a new person in.
I I guess I only had one kind of thought. It seems like we're tackling more things than just House Bill 2001 with this. And kind of all the headers around this topic are just dealing with House Bill 2001, but it looks like we're also tackling the housing, supports the comp plan, comprehensive plan for housing policies. We're also making some clarity and consistency updates and all that. So we're kind of doing, that's fine. Just tackle them all at once. But that means it's more than just kind of what the the header of the thing says. It's just House Bill, you know? Or maybe it does say a little more. It's just kind of a, oh, housing code update focused on House Bill 2001.
That probably will really be important as we go forward to public outreach and when we go to hearing to make sure that the titles are letting the public know that it's more than just state required.
We're using the opportunity to do more and kind of comprehensively hit things at the same time. Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you for bringing that up. Alright, now that we've derailed Erica's summary introduction.
No, it's it's okay. The second item in your packet in regards to HB 2001 are the stakeholder interviews and a summary of those interviews that took place this past November and December. So we reached out to developers in the area as well as Jean. I think you took part in the interview process as well, as well as some counselor members. And this kind of fed off of our stakeholder interviews from our comp plan. However, we did touch on, you know, how like residential design standards and what those could look like in the city from these stakeholder interviews. And I think one of the the things that came out of this interview process was the idea of, you know, flexibility in those standards from from a lot of folks. But a lot of folks do recognize they like the way Sherwood looks now, and we want to kind of move forward, you know, with a nice aesthetic in the community as well. The third thing that we're working on that we touched briefly in that memo was a visual preference survey for the community. And this is something we've been putting together for the last couple of weeks, and it is expected to go online this Friday, January fifteenth, until probably January twenty ninth or the first week of February. This visual preference survey is going to touch on a lot of design elements for these middle housing types. So, you know, what does the front facade? Do you, you know, do you like the front facade? Do you like the front entry points? Do you like the parking shown in the photo? And then, you know, folks are going to have the ability to kind of rank the photos in order of of the preference that they like. So you might see, you know, five duplexes, and then you'll be able to say, you know, you'll be able to like rank what duplex you like the most to the least, if that makes sense.
I I think for clarity, the how the visual preference survey is not just for middle housing. It's for our residential design standard and the new chapter of our code.
Right. Correct. Yep.
Okay. You you had said it was for middle housing, but I think it's really for our whole.
It's for all. Yeah, it's for all.
It's for our new section of the residential code update.
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct, Jean. Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, cuz I want people to really get understanding that if if we proceed as we're going, we're going to be creating a new chapter or a new section in our code. And as development comes in, regardless of what type of development is, there'll be design standards that will be reviewed through the process.
So when the survey comes, when the survey comes out online, we're going to be distributing it, you know, through all of our social media channels, all of the boards and commission email, email distribution lists that we have. Basically, it'll be just like the comp plan surveys that we've been putting out to the community and like the Parks Master Plan survey that went out to the community will be hitting all of our touchpoints in the community that we can reach via, you know, email or social media presence. Taylor?
Hey, so one of the things that that stood out to me was the expense and seemingly, and this is, this is more from my own, during my campaign for city council, the thing I heard from people who were trying to build or were trying to expand or something, they felt like oftentimes there we were, the city was gatekeepers versus partners in development, right? The, you know, a business wanted to expand, provide more jobs or, you know, something like that, and they felt like it was one fee after another or one hurdle after another versus, you know, and so I I don't know if you know, this with the stakeholders, is that something that we have any input in to be able to say, hey, we want there to be, you know, if I can wave a magic wand, I want there to be, if somebody says, I'm willing to put millions of dollars into your community and and build there, I want to be like, fantastic, let's figure out how we can work together to make this work for both of us and not have it feel like we've erected, you know, a wall, and we say we want it to stay this exact same, you know, exactly forever, and we're going to put up the barriers to any kind of, you know, new change or development. Because essentially, then people will just say, alright, well, I'll just go to Cambie. We're all go to, we're all go to whatever. And it's and it's fine, except that, you know, that's how communities don't kind of evolve and 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 change. I know that we love the way that Sherwood is and the way that it looks. But I, and so I, anyway, I I think I I don't know if this is something that we have control over, but when I was reading through this, I was like, there's some things that, you know, we're hearing it from the horse's mouth. Is that something that we can do as a planning commission to address, or is this something that I gotta go to, you know, the city manager or somebody about and just say, hey, let's 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 work on teamwork versus adversarial. And I don't know, by the way, I've never tried to build in Sherwood, so I don't know. I'm just hearing about it from others, so.
So I I don't know about Erica, first, like, would it defend city staff? Because we do hear a lot of times during our hearings how helpful the staff has been to get through the process. Now, the difference between like commercial development and residential development, I I think the big thing in the residential development is the amount of SDC fees and the cost burden that the developer has to carry to just get into the city of Sherwood, coupled with our lot sizes, create an opportunity for developers to see us as more expensive because we can't, they can't do seventeen houses per acre and recoup all the SDCs they have to pay per acre. And so it becomes, you know, but the SDCs are also not out of our control, but they're in the council's control. And so there's park SDCs, there's all the other things that, you know, that it's surprising when we see things come in there when they have to pay for infrastructure and roads, fees and not only the city of Sherwood to Washington County and clean water services that really are costly. So Erica, you could add more to that, but I still first want to defend that most of the time, I think in residential, it's what we've heard is it's staff does a great job, but it really costs a lot of money.
Right, but but that's it. That's just it. Is it is it something that is out of the control or is it something that's built up over time? It needs to be, you know, as we're looking at the twenty-year plan, is it something that we need to look at and say, if we want businesses to invest here and commercial to build here and all blah, 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 do we need to look at that so that, you know, the first, you know, response is not, ooh, could we get this done in Wilsonville? Or could we get it done in blah, you know, because it's going to be just too expensive to go into Sherwood? Or do we say, hey, we, you know, we like that. Anyway, sorry. Commissioner Kai, did you have something to add?
Well, just just going off of what Jean was was talking about, are my understanding of SDCs are that, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You're cutting out there.
Okay. My understanding of SDCs are that one, you know, for the most part, I I I believe that they are essential for development in in our community. But not just that, they also benefit to the amenities and the, you know, they're part of what makes our community as desirable and and great as it is. So what I'm wondering is, I mean, our SDCs substantially cheaper in other comparable communities. You know, not that it's quite apples to apples, but you know, are 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 SDCs more or less in Lake Oswego versus potentially Wilsonville or or something like like that? I'm guessing, Erica, you might have input on that.
I don't know off the top of my head what the SDC fees are in other, you know, jurisdictions, but each jurisdiction is different. Each jurisdiction has their own SDC methodology, you know, for what their capital improvement projects are listed in their plan because all those projects help, you know, get you to an SDC number. But I kind of want to take another step back. Thank you, Jean, for picking up the fact that developers, you know, we do hear from people that, you know, staff is, you know, pretty easy to work with. I like to think that we're pretty easy to work with when people come in and have ideas for projects. We walk them through the process, you know, in a straightforward manner. You know, sometimes people have projects and you know, the code is the code. And, you know, and sometimes, you know, we have to just work through those code issues, you know, to get to a project that is going to work.
But I think we need to differentiate between the cost of a commercial business coming in here. That is not what we're able to address with residential design standards. We can look at our SDC fees and see if that is a burden that we can't do anything about what we can acknowledge as part of the process. Because I think that's important to note, because there's a perception that they're really expensive, but they may not be if we compare them to our neighboring communities. And I have seen that chart, and I think it's in our housing needs analysis that compares our system development charges to our neighboring communities, and it's not.
I think we're right in the middle.
Yeah, we are right in the middle. But I think the part that makes affordability a bigger challenge in Sherwood is that our school bonds are pretty high. And so when you, when you look at residential people, residents is moving to the city of Sherwood, there is there is that added burden when you come into.
But we're we're also, you know, the math is that we think people want to pay for the better schools that were paid for by those bonds. So, you know, and 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 that's fine. Those, you know, we want to pay, or we we want people to move here that are incentivized by good schools because typically, you know, they're they're more invested in 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 the community, so.
And that's what SDCs do for our parks and our waterways and our riprarian corridors and in some measure, our transportation, but we don't have a lot of control over what Washington County is going to charge us, so. Commissioner Kai, do you have another comment?
Oh, no, my hand was just still up from before. Sorry.
So before we move on.
I didn't know what those were. I did notice, though, what was interesting about, the only thing that was interesting about it to me is it was it was people other than the developer section had commented on that, too, which is kind of made me think, maybe it's worth talking about. So I'm glad we did. Thank you.
Yeah. And it for for the thirty seconds of how SDCs work is each each part, like, for example, parks, they come up with a list of projects that they want to do in their capital improvement project over their twenty-year horizon. And then some numbers have to be assigned about how much each of these projects are going to cost. And if we're going to do these projects in the next year, five years or twenty years, these are the dollars that have to be collected. And in order to collect these amount of dollars, we have to assign a value per acre or per housing unit or per some other division, linear foot of road, however, whatever it's a metric. And so when the capital improvement projects are And so when the capital improvement projects are run through on the master plans of parks, transportation, water, sewer, those capitalized projects drive what our SDC fees are going to be going forward, and then the council approves the SDCs each year at their, during their budget process, correct?
I, you know what, that is a great question.
This is Julia, hi. They, they update, the SDCs are calculated when we do the SDC methodology. What they do annually is basically just adjust them for inflation.
Inflation.
Okay, I knew it was in the budget once a year, so thank you for clarifying, but that's thirty seconds on SDCs and big complicated thing that the planning commission, we look at the master plans as they come through, but there's other commissions and boards that provide their capital improvement projects.
I see. Thank you.
Justin, is your hand still up?
Yeah, I, I did just put it back up. I, I was just wondering, you know, since we're talking about it, does, does the city or, you know, or some other metric feel that the rate of development that we have going on in Sherwood, do we feel that it's low or anemic or anything? You know, I mean, I know from a developer standpoint and, and, you know, reading through the issues concerning affordability, you know, talking about SDCs making, you know, making things more expensive and always wanting things to be cheaper, but I feel like it's a balance, because, you know, it, a lot of times, many residents don't want things to change at all, which obviously we're not, we know can't necessarily happen, but at the same time, we probably don't want things to blow up or explode, you know, more quickly than we can, we can handle. I'm just wondering, like, is it, are, are we, because as, as a resident, I feel like we're in, in a pretty good state, that I feel like it's a pretty good balance, I'm not, I'm just curious, you know, does, does the city feel that we're low on that end or, or, or something like that?
So I, I guess I'll try to chime in. I think it's relative, it's always going to be relative. I mean, we do have an identified need for housing, and we have a mildly identified need for employment now, and that will probably increase as we update stuff for the comp plan, so there, there are needs. What, you know, one of the things that, it's, it's hard to answer other than that. We are, just sort of anecdotally, I think that Sherwood is, we are growing at a manageable pace, we are not, you know, I'm just thinking about staffing, and we're not, you know, drowning, but we're also not begging for work, you know, so, you know, it's, it's a manageable pace from a staffing standpoint. There have definitely been times in the past, even before my time, where we were growing really, really, really fast.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I guess I don't know quite how to answer it other than that.
And, and, and that does get to what I'm, what I'm, what my question, question is, or, or, you know, primarily, it was just a thought that was, you know, in my head in relation to, to SDCs and, and things like that, so, thank you.
Well, may I ask, I mean, effectively, we're perceived as an expensive community to build in, right? And these developers are incurring these costs, those essentially get bought, passed on to the buyer, and your, your real sticker shock is when you're dealing with your property taxes in the next years, right? Because it's kind of a buried cost in your initial year in a home. So I, I mean, I don't know what we can do to, to fix that, it's, it is Sherwood. I mean, I, I think that's the, the slow growth is our proximity to Portland and ease of transportation and just our, our cost of, of housing, right? Which I, I don't think anybody that lives here is mad at that either, though, it's, it's, a house is your largest investment, and typically for most people. I don't know. I, I don't have a better insight, sorry.
Thank you. So Erica, are you, you've given the recap of the, the memo that was provided, and we've kind of derailed it a couple of times with our, our comments, and you gave us a seven chart, seven column chart. We have the comments from the stakeholders' surveys and then, and alert that we're going to be getting a visual preference survey, and that we want everybody to take it. Are you looking for feedback at this time on the, the chart about anything that, if we saw something that was alarming or something that we had questions about, do you want to go over this now, or do you want us to send you email with a question, or are we, what's our next step with, with this agenda item for the housing code update discussion?
Yeah, I, I think if, if there are any, moving forward with this, with this item, at the staff level, I think we are going to be focused on the kind of the following things that we've heard from the planning commission and the community, and those things are that we need to be focusing on those items that are actually, that are purely required by the House bill. Specific topic, hot topic areas in the design standards include parking, off-street and on-street, setbacks in landscaping, and then we've heard a lot about cottage clusters, yeah, through our comprehensive plan, you know, policy work. And so I think those items are kind of, are going to be our, like, hot ticket items as we move forward. But if there are any other items that you see in that matrix that you have questions about or want more information on, please, you know, email Joy and I, we can start there, and we can kind of keep a part, a little parking lot list of those items, and then come back to planning commission. Because we, I expect, I fully expect that this topic on the work that we're doing, we're going to be having a work session about these standards, you know, at least every month here on out until the end of June.
Okay, I just want to, I got a message from Commissioner Kai, were, were you able to get back sound? No.
Looks like he just sent a new message as well, looks like he said he is hearing it now.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
That was me, I was just letting him know that it was him, not.
The rest of us, okay.
The rest of us, I just.
Hopefully, Commissioner Kai, maybe you can text him the phone number, maybe he can dial us.
I will do that.
Okay, and while, while you're doing that and you have no hands to take notes, I, can I ask if the state has produced the model code for House Bill 2001 that is relevant to our community? I know they did, I thought they did one of them, but I didn't know if that's for us or for the other. I know there's two classifications, small cities and large metro. Have they done the model codes for either one of those?
They have, so there is a draft model code for both, and I can, oh, here's Justin, let's see if he can.
All right.
Justin, are you there?
Yeah, I'm back. My, my, how old, my, I think my fifteen-year-old laptop computer is not wanting to work for me anymore.
Oh, dear.
The sound just stopped, stopped coming through, and it, I don't know for what reason, so.
Yep, we are all loving technology now, aren't we?
Hopefully, this year, we'll be back together.
Yeah, so the model code, if you could send out the link to the one that's relevant to us, so that we can see what, what the state is going to be or.
And I can definitely tell you from looking at it that it's more aspirational.
So is it gonna, is it gonna get my blood pressure up then, is that what you're, you're saying?
I think so.
Okay, all right, well then, maybe don't send it to me. I know, I'll have to do it some point, but, okay. So does anybody have any red flags on the chart that she provided to us, other than the questions that were asked already, and now an understanding that the question marks on the House Bill 2001 column, staff's going to be providing additional information to see where we are in compliance or not?
By red flags, do you mean any other items that are kind of hot topics, or what do you, what do you mean by that?
Well, comments that were made by staff that maybe didn't, like, like our first comment, where it didn't quite.
Get the intent of the planning commission.
That what, what, what staff was noting isn't what the planning commission or what, what you thought maybe, because there's, one of them says, consider adding, my, my highlights was consider adding provisions for variations to the residential design standards and doing type one, type two, class A, class B adjustments, and so it's not required, I'm just wondering how that's going to be. I'm a little concerned about allowing variances in the first run of the code when we don't even know how the first draft of the code's going to, you know, is it going to work? You know, it's like, my, my example's industrial design standards, when we first ran through and did design standards on industrial and then allowed for variations up to ten or twenty percent, we didn't even know what the first product was going to be, and now we're going to allow variations. I'd rather do something similar to what we discussed before, which is have more tools in the toolbox that they can add or subtract from it instead of having exceptions to, just throwing that, I, and it may work, we may work variances that, that a staff-level decision may make it easier, but I don't know how you do a ten percent variance on architectural features on a house, so it just became a little nebulous for me, so that was one of my concerns.
Great.
Commissioner Kai, you were, you had a hand raised concern on one of these items?
I did have, and we are talking about the matrix, so items within the matrix, right?
Yeah, and my, my comment that I just did was on Planning Packet, page eleven. All right, yes, go ahead.
So I'm not sure if this may have come up, you know, when I couldn't hear, but some, like, I did have question, a question on Packet, page seven, section sixteen, dot twelve, dot zero three zero. Further down, when it's talking about density, and it's talking, maximum densities cannot be applied to duplex, triplex or fourplex, maximum density must be four times the maximum density for single. Erica, what does that mean? So does, does, you know, because I know each of our residential zones has density maximum, does, do these, these don't apply towards it like per unit acre or something?
Correct.
So then, so, but like, so is there still, I mean, I'm, I'm just concerned, obviously, by the, the, the whole notion of no, no maximum, which apparently might be, might be an issue in your mind as well. I just, I'm just wondering how is this supposed to work, or what are the potential unintended consequences?
Presuming they're unintended.
That's a great, that's a great question, Justin, I, and I don't know what the unintended consequences are going to be yet, I don't think anybody knows, this is, you know, brand new to cities across the state, I think we're going to be learning a lot over the next couple of years, you know, and learn and fix as we go.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like, what's the point of zoning, you know?
Oh, totally.
Right, because you're going to have very low-density residential that if we can't get a ruling from DLCD, we can, through a PUD, have it divided into four lots, and each one of those lots will have a quad on it, so now you've got sixteen units on an area that is zoned for one.
Right, and that's what I'm, I mean, are we, you know, like, for an area that's supposed to have, you know, traditionally, we can fit, you know, a few, a few units, you know, are we going to see hundreds or, if, you know, thousands, who knows what? And I'm just wondering what, so like, what type of, what, you know, I mean, what control mechanism do we still have in that sense? Are we able to limit the number of duplexes or triplexes? And, or are these still constrained by, by lot size? It is, right?
Lot size setbacks.
And design standards.
And design standards.
Lot, lot sizes, setbacks and design standards, that's what you, that are the only regulations that we can apply to.
Encourage?
Encourage our community to develop in a appropriate setting.
So, you know, I know, and, and residential design standards, I think, are, are paramount, and I'm glad that we're, you know, looking at them, getting them done, but, you know, I know we've always talked about trying to lower the minimum lot size, should we look at increasing the minimum lot size at this point? Can, you know, in, in response to it, because it's just, it, it just seems kind of ridiculous, so.
It's kind of frightening, isn't it?
Absolutely.
The state doesn't feel we can plan our own city.
If I may digress, we're seeing, up, up in Detroit, you know, we were wiped out with the fires, right? That's where my vacation home is, and they didn't have zoning up there, and you had these lots put in that were thirty by fifty and such, I mean, like, you couldn't fit a septic system in a house on the same lot comfortably. I'm, I'm having a problem, is my lot is a fifty by a hundred and thirty-five, and the layout of it is, I'm having to hire a custom architect, and we're still trying to figure out how we get the septic sealed, filled in there. So I, I would strongly advise, based on experience I'm having up at Detroit, not going down on the lot sizes, because it's, it's, it's insane when you come back on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think the parking thing might help as well.
Yeah, that's horrible, too.
Those, those and setbacks, like you said, all, and I noticed we're adding something about landscaping as well, right? Is that, is that new?
No, we already, we've always had landscaping, but maybe better to.
Something like that that was new?
So we always require landscaping in the setback areas on residential lots, but we're looking at the possibility of having a, a minimum or like a minimum landscaping requirement.
Okay.
I think that'll be a challenge.
And one of the rationales for that is that by having sort of a minimum landscape requirement, we can ensure that the entire lot isn't covered with building and driveway, essentially, it kind of helps, again, with that, the aesthetic aspect of things.
Thank you. Commissioner Giles, is your hand up?
Yes, well, first of all, I wanted to support your idea of the, let's get the standard out, let's see what needs to be modified, and then create the modifications. It's, it's always easier to give it a few real-world experience where you try to create those, or as anybody who's designed software in a waterfall manner, you can never think of every variation, and so you're gonna, you, you'll think of a hundred variations, only three or four of them are going to be used, and you just wasted a lot of time, so. But then, the second thing is, do we look at any of the infrastructure stuff like, you know, with the, when I look at the popularity of electric cars, and yes, it's very small now, but by 2030, it's supposed to be massive, do we say, hey, we want to encourage builders to put the infrastructure in for charging cars and garages and stuff like that, you know, just like putting fiber to the home, like, I don't think, I, I'm pretty sure that's part of the code now, but it's one of those things where I can't imagine buying a home that was built now without that being a part of it, and so, or any solar, you know, or alternative thing, like, are, are those kinds of infrastructures things, things that we should be having a conversation as part of the twenty forty plan, or no?
Yes, and Taylor, I think some of those things are coming up in this infrastructure, section that we're talking about now, that you're going to be seeing on the twenty-sixth that we're talking about now that you're going to be seeing on the 26th of this month.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Vance?
Oh, yeah, that's right, I had another question, yes. I, in, one of you said something that kind of reminded me when we were talking about not covering a lot, which is building. There is on packet page 16, the, the top one there has to do with multifamily developments. And consider reducing the amount of open space required from 20% to 10%. That kind of falls into the same category to me. I mean, especially for, for building multifamily and especially if there's kids living there, there's already hardly a place to get outside unless there's park. Parks are great, but I tell you, as a parent of small children, parks are not the same as having like kind of a yard area. So I don't know, that one to me is another opportunity. If it isn't really required by House Bill 2001, maybe that's one that we evaluate as well. Yeah.
I, I concur.
Is, are we able to increase that percentage, not decrease it?
I think.
I'm trying, I'm trying to see whatever tools we, we have at our disposal or, or make more, more useful for us.
Commissioner Kai tonight feels like he's in that reverse marketing, like we're gonna raise the price, everything so we can show we've discounted it later.
Totally.
Yeah, there you go.
Look, it used to be this constrained, we're being very generous now.
Look, we, our standard is 50%, but we're willing to go to, to 40 for, for you, we like you.
Oh, my God.
All right.
I did notice, isn't there an exception? I think you referred to it earlier, Commissioner Simpson, um, about very low density. Like because of the reason it exists is because of like protecting conservation and stuff. So there might be some limitations within that. And I think I read that in here too, but.
Yeah.
You did, you did read about that in your, in that table. And I think there's a question mark actually in that column because I am having a conversation with DLCD staff, um, this Friday um, in regards to the very low density residential zone and goal five, which is the preservation of natural resources and kind of how that interplays with House Bill 2001. So I think I'm gonna have some more answers for you in regards to that zone, um, later this month.
And.
And houses surrounded by a lot of wetlands, yeah.
Well, it's surrounded by a lot of wetlands. It's scab land, so they're, they're gonna be di- dynamiting rock, you know, cause it's, it's just a rock underneath it. And it already has a DEQ cleanup going on it. So I think creating any more burden on that area would be in, inappropriate. Or it'd make it even more difficult to develop, maybe. All right.
And, Erica, I had, I had, um, one, one other question.
Yes.
On, um, packet page 14, um, section 16.94, point, uh, 020 off-street parking standards. Partway down, when it's talking about triplex and fourplexes, one, one to three, one to three spaces total depending on lot size. Fourplex, one to four spaces total depending on lot size. So for potentially triplex or fourplex for off-street parking, is there, do we have other requirements for, for minimum like one space per, like is, again, garages don't count. But if they don't wanna, if they don't build a garage, then do they, do they not have to build a parking? If they're building a triplex or fourplex?
It's, I mean, they're gonna have to, whatever our parking standards are for off-street parking, they will have to comply with, um.
But does that, would our standard, does our, is our standard affected by this? Which, or correct me if I'm misunderstanding this, but I'm reading this as, as if it's a triplex, they could have as little as one, one off-street space for all three units.
I don't have that answer for you right now.
Cause, you know, I mean, I understand, you know, to, to our detriment as a city, I understand that the state is trying to allow or encourage development and or units at any cost whatsoever. But again, just thinking practically, considering, you know, the, the, the suburban community that, that we are, to think that residents and households are gonna operate without a vehicle or without a parking for vehicle is, is just insane, so.
Right, and so that might be some of the pushback we have to do is that because of our location within the metro bounds, we need to have a parking allowance that is not model code. If we were in.
That is not Portland, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if we were on a major transit line where we could, had actual frequently running transit system, we might be able to reduce the number of cars that we have, but that is not where we're located. We're located too far from jobs to be able to have convenient transportation if we don't have a car. Um, so the way our, is our, just to be clear, our code is for multifamily. Isn't it like 1.25 per bedroom?
Yeah.
Right, so if it's a three-bedroom townhouse, you have to have 1.75 parking spaces. And they are now changing, if, if it was over a fourplex and each fourplex had three bedrooms and ours, we, we'd have a factor and say, okay, there's a total of 12 bedrooms and it'd be 1.25 per, you know, times 12. And that's how many parking spaces we would have. But this is saying, no, you just need 12 park, you can't, you can't require more than 12 spaces. Is that what it's saying? So ours would say, ours code currently says we have to have 16 parking spaces for 12 multifamily units based on the number of bedrooms, I mean, four units with 12 bedrooms. But they're saying we can't require that we can only, is it only require or only allow? I think this is Commissioner Vance's question before.
Yeah.
We can only allow it?
Can, can you clear, I, I, I think that might need clarification. I thought it was required, but people can provide more parking than they are required to provide, right?
I'll, I'll clarify that.
Okay.
And let you know for.
Even, even the require worries me a little bit. I mean, we've, we've kind of already talked about how even though very low density is the only one where we don't allow anything other than single family. Most developers still be building single family. This is a case though, where I think I saw in the, the memorandum and comments, developers complaining about the number of parking spaces required. So I think that if that's all that's required, that's probably what we're gonna get. That worries me a little bit.
Yep.
Noted.
All right. Um, we haven't, I, I missed Commissioner Waidola's text message last meeting and I don't want to miss if he has any comments that he wants to make during our chart, our matrix before we leave this evening. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Waidola.
As he has able to raise my hand, all is good. Uh, so, um, yeah, I, I'm, I'm good. You know, I don't know how much there is to, uh, comment here that hasn't been made already. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm satisfied.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
All right, moving on to our second topic of the evening is our action plan for the comprehensive plan. And what I sent out last week in your packet was the first section, which deals with economic development, our thriving and diverse, diversified economy section. Um, and essentially what this table, uh, we'll have a table like this for each of our, you know, six major themes to the comp plan. And this, this action plan is basic, basically what it becomes is staff's, our, our work plan for the next several years on how we implement, um, the policy and language in the comprehensive plan. So over the next couple of months, um, we'll be going over the, you know, tables for the six themes. The actions in the table, um, have either been developed through planning staff and consultants or just, you know, planning staff. Um, this is the, the economic, um, development chapter. The goals and policies in that table, um, you know, they were developed through our community advisory committee, um, our, our economic opportunities analysis, um, that the planning commission reviewed in 2018, but you'll be reviewing it again here over the next couple of months because we have to adopt it, just like the housing needs analysis. And I think I provided a link to the EOA and the packet materials for the new commissioners if they just wanted to, um, you know, read through it before we dive into it here in the next couple of months. But I think the way that we're gonna proceed, proceed with these table charts is, A, do they make sense? I think this is a goo, a good, um, exercise for you to see how everything really kind of relates to one another. We have the, you know, vision on top, then we have the goal, then we have our policies and objectives. And then we have the action item and the action item calls out, you know, what department is kind of, you know, in charge of doing that action? Um, is it a short-term, medium-term or long-term goal? And then it also, um, looks at, are there any funding opportunities out there that, um, will help us, you know, implement that action? Jean, do you have something to say?
My cat's crazy and he just came bounding out of the back room, so. There's that. I, I was, I, I, I just want to be clear. So for the planning commission and what our homework assignment is, this is one of seven sets of charts we're gonna be receiving over the next six to eight months before we go to hearing. When we adopt at our hearing, we're going to adopt the comprehensive plan, which includes the vision statements, the goals and the objectives. And this action matrix will be on the side, not adopted formally because this is going to be the living document that staff gets to manipulate through goal-setting sessions and working with different, um, commissions, boards, council and their own management team to, to prioritize action plans. So when we look at this, we're going to be, the first two columns are going to be a hearing adopt, or, um, the first column's hearing adoption ready and the next one is more, um, work paper, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then for homework, the economics opportunity analysis that you talked about, that is a document that's already been, has it al- already been adopted by the council? Or it's, is it pending adoption with the comprehensive plan?
It's pending adoption with the comprehensive plan, kind of just how the housing needs analysis was. It was kind of hanging out there for a little bit. We are going back right now and taking a look at the, um, economic opportunities analysis and looking at our buildable lands inventory for our commercial industrial developments and kind of making sure that those lands that have been developed within the past two years are taken out of the inventory.
Okay.
Um, so that's what we're doing right now. And then we're gonna be taking it back to planning commission probably by early, the, early this spring for you to re, to, for you to review and to provide a recommendation to council for adoption.
Okay, and for new commissioners, this has been through commission and council two or three times already. So, um, it's gonna look like an overwhelming document, but, um, you know, if you have questions, ask staff or, or call Justin or call myself or, um, Commissioner Waidola that have been through the process a couple of times. We don't want you to feel like, you know, creating the wheel and having to go through a 200-page document and, and get to the nuts and bolts because the nuts and bolts have been tightened down a couple, three different times. So it's what, to give perspective of where we're at with that, that program.
So when we vote as new commissioners, is it just the new relevant sections to us? Or is it gonna be, I mean, the goal is not to revisit the whole packet, I'm guessing at this point, the whole plan?
We'll have to adopt the entire plan, but some of the, um, assumptions, concerns and issues, I, I just wanted to give you perspective that it has already been through council and commission. And so a lot of the, the concerns have been vetted out. Not the, and if you see a new concern, it, it doesn't prevent you from, from raising a concern, but I don't want you to think, oh, this is the first time we've all seen it. And, you know, it, it, and we've all read it a couple of times already, I think.
Yeah.
That's true, and kind of the, one of the reasons why we've kind of held it aside, um, you know, over the past year and a half is because, uh, we knew some large parcels were coming online and we're going to be, uh, you know, going through the development process such as, you know, the Trammell Crow site at 104th or 124th and, um, 12 Sherwood Road. So we wanted to take those large parcels out of the inventory process. Um, cause the BLI tells us, you know, basically, do we have enough, um, commercial industrial land, you know, for Sherwood, for jobs over the next 20 years?
So the BLI is the buildable lands inventory. And the concern that was raised by council at the beginning of this process was that the consultants that were hired for the economic opportunities analysis were not recommending as much commercial land expansion or industrial land expansion. It was, um, it became, it was looking like a self fulfilled, fulfilling prophecy that we are a bedroom community to Portland. And if we have a lot of houses and we build a lot of houses, we need to exponentially grow more houses, which means that we were neglecting our industrial and commercial base. And so what Erica's saying is that we're trying to demonstrate that we need commercial and industrial land so that we can grow our tax base, so that we can become a viable thriving community. What, because we have a balanced tax base. So that's, that's a lot of the background of what happened with the economic opportunities and why Erica's telling us that they're taking off inventory things that are being developed so that we can show that we are short commercial and industrial land, so we can work on balancing our tax base. So if that helps a, a little bit. Before you get it, yeah, big document. And when you see it, it might, it might help a little bit, so. Um, Commissioner Kai, you have a comment?
Yeah, um, Erica, I just wanted to make sure, um, there was a recent, um, city council, planning commission, um, combined work session, um, but that was regarding a different section of the comp plan, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, cause as I was looking through the document, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to be looking for that section that we talked about with city council for us to revisit, but it seems like that's gonna be something at a later, later time, right?
Yep, that'll come later. So tonight, we're just gonna focus on the economic, um, development, goals and policies and action items. And the action items in that table, um, were developed through the, the EOA process.
The, the what, the?
The economic opportunities analysis.
Okay.
Process. So a lot, so I, all of the action items in that table that you have before you tonight, have already been reviewed at some point by the planning commission and, um, our citizen advisory committee. But the que, you know, the questions that I posed to you in that memo are, do these still make sense? You know, are we missing any action items? Um, and if we are, quite possibly, then we might be missing a, you know, an objective to, to a policy. But if you think it's all good, if you.
So.
That's fine too. We can just, you know, move on to the next theme. At an, at a later meeting, of course.
Okay, so my, I'll, I'll just go straight to true confessions on this. I had already seen so much of this, I thought you were just recapturing something that we had already looked at before. And my eyes glazed over a little bit and I said, I think this is all the same thing that we did before. And Erica's just filling in the blanks and. And a trustful faith in Erica and the staff that they had captured everything from copy pasting all the previous documents. So I did not do a dot for dot from the last draft to this draft to all the comprehensive plan committee notes that we've had, so um. That's, that's my true confession, is I did not dot for dotted, I assumed that it was just what we had looked at before and that it was pretty clean. And that there's a comprehensive plan committee, a C A C committee, that's also looking at this, and they're probably got a big three-ring binder that's going to be checking each section as they, as they compile it, correct? Or not?
No, correct, and um that'll happen to you with the committee at the very end of the process. We'll, you know, we'll be going back to all of the goals, policies, and objectives, and making sure that we haven't missed anything along the way. Um, you know, because as we go through the plan, and, you know, and as we try to, you know, balance, you know, objectives in the community, yeah, we might miss something.
Right, and you know, some, some person, you know, I, I have been known to track changes like a dog with a bone, because that is the most important thing, and I want to make sure that through all the edits, it ends up being, you know, addressed, or it doesn't get lost. And I think each one of us might find in different sections of the comprehensive plan update, things that we find very, very critical and that we will, will monitor more closely, and things that are less critical and more administrative, like um supporting business growth and the action items that are related to that. We're all on board with that, and the action items are going to change from year to year, so um. I would see this as a document that we're gonna see one more time in a packet with six other um s- vision statements and, and groups, right? And this is our opportunity to try and digest it one piece at a time, right?
Correct, one piece at a time.
Yes, if we were handed the entire comprehensive plan update and all the modules all at once, we could not read it all at once.
No. I mean, you could, but I wouldn't.
Not, not in the se- not in the six days we have before the hearing.
That's, that's right. I think this is, you know, this act- this action plan is, you know, a really good way to get familiar with all of the goals, policies, objectives, um, and the plan, and then to think about how we're gonna implement those policies and objectives through our action items. If all of the action items in this particular, you know, table for the economic development chapter look great, you know, we can then move forward to the next theme um in the comprehensive plan, which I think was good governance.
I didn't want to cut in front of Mr. Giles, sorry, go ahead.
Fine, I just, like, it, it hurts uh my product manager soul to uh hear us accept that we have to live with a plan that is unreadable and unusable to the you know, to the, like, it, it's hard to get excited about something that cannot be easily understood, and I get that there's so much complexity and there's so much, but when I read this and I read through this and I, like, I like, I, I agree with it all, and I, and I still am looking at it going, is there a way to make this more accessible? Is there a way to make this so that you can, you can, a- and I I, I'm not trying to dumb it down to sound, or soundbites, or, or pitches, or, or, you know, or things like that, I'm just it's, it, it feels inaccessible, given how massive it is, and so um, and, you know, I know that we had a whole conversation about um actions versus I mean, there were, like, the terminology about different levels of the plan and, and stuff like that, and um anyway, is that something I have just got to get used to in government work and, and accept? Or is it something that we as average citizens, if, if somebody asks me, great, what is the twenty forty plan about, or what are the, what are the highlights? Can I give them an elevator pitch, or is it well set aside a couple of weeks of your life to, to dig in?
Well, well, like, the, I guess I'll, I'll give it from my layman's perspective. There is, the comprehensive plan has to encompass so many parts of our community that there is not one soundbite that will encompass it, but there is one overarching vision statement for the entire community, and that vision statement can be found easily on our website and will be part of the packet that we adopt, which I don't, you know, I don't have it memorized. And then each of the modules that we're working in, what do you call them? Um, they're chapters, and this chapter that we're working on is thriving and diversified economy, and it has an overarching vision statement. And so if you take it into bite-sized vision statements, that's what we're looking at, and our vision statement for the economy is that it is a variety of businesses, big and small, and a stable employment opportunities. And those visions that the community wanted to have then drove us to some objectives, and so what what we should end up with is seven vision statements for the seven chapters in our book. And, and then, you know, that should be our seven thesis statements in the seven chapters of our book, and each chapter within the book is gonna have objectives that we have to drill into. So that's what we're gonna be adopting. The action strategy is part of the project because people want to know.
Implementation.
It drives implementation, but when we start saying um support business growth, the next thing that starts happening is people start throwing out ideas, well, you ought to do this, you ought to do this, you ought to do this, you ought to do this. Well, while we're hot in the topic of supporting business growth in Sherwood, we start capturing action items and strategies. And so this document is trying to capture those items, which is more than what we have to approve, but it is a document that will allow us to get what's happening now and capture all those ideas in each chapter and theme that we're going through. So there's not gonna be one, there, there's one soundbite, there's one vision, but there's seven chapters to our book, and each book, each chapter has some some extra paragraphs and pages.
But there, there's the vision statement for the chapter, but then there's goals that are underneath that, and then there's
Objective.
That drive to that goal.
Yes.
I guess, um, hmm, I, all right, I will, I will continue to um kind of keep an eye on it, because it, it, it feels in as, and maybe it is just my personality, but it could be, you know, just because I'm a new commissioner, it feels super inaccessible to figure out what is um actually being decided versus what is just we want more jobs. Right?
Correct, and, and it is, it's onerous, and then to hu- understand that the comprehensive plan isn't actually what we as a planning commission use to make our decisions on individual applications, because that's part of the code. So that's, you know, it's two different documents, but the comprehensive plan should have those seven chapters and those goals, I'm just trying to, I, I like how you're questioning, because I have questioned it a lot, and I always like to get it dumbed down to layman's terms, and if we don't have it in a layman's term, and we've had this conversation multiple times, we need to have, you know, um a, an outline that says, this is where you go, and this is what you do, so that it's, it's more clear for someone else. Because it's, it is onerous, but it needs to be um.
Comprehensive, it's in the name, yeah.
And, and, and um comprehensible, you have to be able to understand it, so, all right, sorry. Commissioner Vance?
My question is kind of along the same thing, I um, I, so I kind of also read this, because I, I wasn't here for this goal, right? So I, I kind of read this as, okay, this is interesting information for stuff that's already approved and done, okay, good. Um, but it sounds like I have to be going through here and deciding things. So I guess my question is, what part of this, I mean, are, are the actual objectives and goal locked, are those approved by the, those are done? So what part of my, what's my purview here, like, what's, and then what's the difference between us and this other committee that's, I guess I have two questions?
No, that's great.
Yeah.
So, right now, um, all of the goals and policies and, and objectives in that action plan are still in draft form. They've been reviewed by our community advisory committee, which is made up um of a group of, like, fifteen folks from around Sherwood, um, who re- who review our dr- our draft goals and policies through the comprehensive planning through, through the process that we've set up. So for example, we are working on our infrastructure of goals and policy themes, and next Wednesday, our community advisory committee meets to, you know, review the draft goals and policies that we've put together.
And then it comes to us to do something with?
So, at the very end of the process, the C A C will make a recommendation to council to, to, to review the draft goals and policies and to make a recommendation to council for approval. Um, so at the, you know, the C A C, you know, at the very end of this process, hopefully will give their two thumbs up to all of these goals and policies, and then forward them on to the planning commission to review.
So I would see that the C A C is like an advisory body to the planning commission. There are fifteen people that have been living and breathing each one of these chapters and sections. They're not planners, they're normal citizens like us, and they're, they're looking at the vision statement and then trying to do goals and objectives that make an aspirational leap to what twenty forty's gonna look like in the city of Sherwood. And when they created the goal of local businesses and attracting new businesses in goal one, the, then they broke it down to an objective, which would be encourage development of private employment. I wish there was a way to, you know, you know, each one of these objectives was to try and further the goal itself.
Yeah, I under- I understand, I, I think my question was where, where does their purview end and ours begin? So if they wrote the goal and the objectives that's been reviewed, council likes it, maybe we not, we're not saying, nope, we don't like that one, it's done. We go to the next column, we're doing action strategy, is that our?
We're gonna look at, we're gonna approve, we're gonna recommend all of this to the council, ev- every part of it. The vision statement, the goals, and the objectives are being recommended to us by the citizen advisory committee, and then we're gonna look at it from our point of view and make a recommendation. We may do tweaks, we may do edits. Um, it is not likely that we will make large sweeping changes to it, because it's gone through a very
Times, yeah.
Yeah, it's gone through quite a bit, but it's not without a statement to say if something changes and it's potentially not in economy, but if one of these objectives, when it came to us and the planning commission said, you know, I really don't think that matches with our goals anymore, I think we ought to get rid of that objective. We can, just like we can with the, an application that comes before us, take a vote as a commission and rewrite the objective, adjust the goal, do something that would change it. But then we are only making a recommendation to council, and council's gonna have the final authority.
I see, okay.
And that's one of the reasons why you didn't adopt it all, you know, in pieces. We wanted intentionally you guys to have the opportunity to look at it again, see it as a whole, and then if, if cha- you know, if there's a part that's inconsistent after we get done, we didn't want to have to go back and and re-adopt something, um, you know, you'll be able to make those changes um as you're going through that, in that final review process, so.
Because section five can, maybe we decide something there that's now gonna conflict with
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And part of some of the things that we've been conflicting with is um the infrastructure and the nature and um parks and rec, which is coming later, but it has been discussed in every, you know, in some of these other things, because they, they seem to mesh together, but they oh no, we're gonna discuss that in next chapter or something, so you're right, as soon as we get to chapter five, it might change something back in chapter one a little bit.
Okay. So back to that main question, if what we're doing with this document is reviewing the whole thing, then basically, and suggesting any changes? But there's a lot of empty boxes, are we writing those, or are we just giving guidance, or how do we, what happens here with this?
No, so um, the empty boxes, as shown right now, are just empty boxes. We're not gonna be filling in this entire document, um, I think I explained that in the memo. Um, not every objective will have an action item. Um, possibly we come back to that o- objective in another, you know, two years, and we need an action item for it. Um, this document is gonna be, you know, you know, changing. Um, it's a living document um to help drive our work.
Okay, but the goals, the visions, the goals, and the objectives are not going to change without a double hearing process and a lot of citizen involvement. The actions and strategies will change constantly, so to focus on the first column, if there's something egregious there, or if something that's in the action plan says, well, that's not what you're telling me this objective is, that's how I would review it, to say, this, this action item doesn't match this objective, and it, it seems to be in conflict.
That makes a ton of sense, okay. So it's not that we can't object to the objectives, it's just a big, huge process, if we needed to go back through that, for now, it's, look at the action strategy thing.
No, and, and we can change the objectives ourselves, but once we do the double hearing process and it's adopted by the city council, then the objectives become more, oh, mm, you know, more
Yeah.
The objectives will stay the same, but we can change them if, you know, all of a sudden, I decide, I don't like, you know, objective three point four, and as a commission, we decide it's, you know, irrelevant, we have the ability to edit and remove in the process.
But it just gets harder to change them the farther up we go, like, easier to change the objective, harder to change the actual goal. Can't change the vision, pretty much.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Sorry.
No, I, I'm sorry, I just, I had a lot of questions.
No, no, they're perfect, because, and you heard my confession at the beginning, that I thought it was a repeat, so I um.
I know, but I also don't wanna, I don't, I, I feel like I, maybe I just caused us to lose two weeks, because I didn't review it this way.
No, no, that's fine, I mean, we have, like I said, we're gonna have y- several different work sessions um on this action plan. We have a next, our next work session is scheduled for the twenty-sixth, so we could definitely bring this back and, you know, have a conversation about it for, you know, half hour or an hour or so, and make any edits, um, you know, and, and discuss anything that's in that table.
Or four hours, this group.
And, and if you don't discuss it, that the next one, when we finally go to hearing, you'll get an opportunity to discuss it all over again, so.
All right.
Does anybody have any m- major strike-throughs, edits, or changes that they want to note on the action plan? All right, thank you, Erica.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, we don't have anything else on the agenda except to adjourn the work session, does anybody have any announcements that they want to make before we adjourn? I, I, I guess I do at, want to ask Erica, oh, I see Commissioner Wydola, go ahead.
Hey, just real quick, is our next meeting, Erica, a working session and a public hearing, or just a working session?
Our, it's just a work session on the twenty-sixth, and I'll be sending out an updated agenda forecast to you tomorrow.
Is it gonna probably be more of the same two things we covered tonight, I'm guessing?
Yep.
Okay.
And then
Uh, what's, is there another public hearing coming up at some point, or do we know?
Actually, yes, so our next public hearing will be on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Um, the Parks Board, the Parks Advisory Board is making a recommendation to planning the Parks Advisory Board is making a recommendation to planning commission early next month, um, for you to review the documents, um, and to ultimately, you know, uh, give a recommendation to council. So we are looking at a hearing date. I believe it's on February 9th.
Okay. It's interesting. So, okay, another random question. I'm sorry. So there's all these boards and commissions underneath the city council, obviously, but some of them have to go through other commissions to get to city council. Um, and so we're one of those. So Parks and Rec doesn't interact with city council directly like we do. They send their stuff through us to recommend. That's how that works?
In this situation, not all, yeah, not always, but in this situation.
Because it's amending the comprehensive plan and you're, and they're, they're adopting a master plan document, you guys as the planning commission, um, ma, are just by virtue of the way our code and the way state law, um, works, you provide that recommendation to the city council. So it, they, they make a lot of decisions that you never see, but because they're doing their plan and it's gotta be adopted through that process, it goes through you guys first.
Interesting. Are there other councils that we go through for things sometimes or? Curious.
Hmm, not really. I mean, there's some interaction sometimes with police advisory board. If, you know, like, as, as they're doing transportation stuff, there might be some, some back and forth. Um, they might make recommendations to you guys. I mean, I'm just, they're, they're fairly new, but um, it's possible that over time they may ma- make recommendations or you guys, um, may ask for their input on some things, um, in parks, uh.
Cultural advisory committee has played a role as we were doing other things years ago, wh- where we were reaching out to them for, you know, direction or input. Interesting.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything that you guys have to get that, that, it's more getting input. And again, because, you know, you, you're dealing with a comprehensive plan that sort of touches so many aspects of the community. So there, there are things that the planning commission will get input, um, you know, up to you guys. Um, and then ultimately you make a recommendation to council on codes and comprehensive plan stuff.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Thanks. Newbie questions.
That's great. We all have lots to learn. All right, Erica, if there's nothing else, are we ready to adjourn?
We are.
We are. All right. I do not see anybody else raising your hand. Thank you very much for all your input this evening. And I guess we'll see each other electronically in a couple of weeks for another work session. And, um, if you have any questions about the documents or what, what the goal or objective or, or, um, whether we're, what our next action item on the document that we're looking at, call Erica or call, call me. They happy to answer any questions. So I should have asked Erica about my chart. All right. Okay. Everybody have a great evening and we will call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Happy New Year.